Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM, Monday, November 22, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first few action items here could have been consent agenda items on Wednesday. It's just that we restructure our agenda, so we'll work our way through these and talk about them as much as we need to. So item number one, consideration of document for an intent to award contract. Welcome.
For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director. And notice of intent to award contract to Pinnacle Architecture for Design Services for 244 Kingwood, which is our newly purchased North County Services Campus Building. And this would be for Design Services for that project. We completed a selection process, and Pinnacle was selected as the finalist. And we're currently, will begin contract negotiations with them. But this is to set that process in motion.
Great. Any questions or thoughts?
Do we have any idea what this is going to cost?
For the Design Services right now, kind of where we've started at in the negotiations is in the $240,000 range, $245,000. We feel that that's in line with the size and scope of the project when we look at it as compared to other projects we've done and then other examples in the area. So we'll be looking through, we're already in the process of looking specifically through their scope of services, how that matches with the project intent, and then finalizing those numbers. And then that contract will come to the Board administratively for approval.
So are we thinking this is 10% and we're going to be spending like 2.45 million?
It's in the 10% to 12% range, which for this project, given you all, I believe, have been on site there and there's, with the conversion from a surgery center to behavioral health treatment space, there's a lot of additional design over and above what we would expect in a typical office building. And so we feel that that's in line with the 10% to 12% range for Design Services as a portion of the overall cost of the project.
I know. It would be nice if we could add some windows.
That is part of the design intent, so they will be looking very closely.
Closed in.
Outside light is very important for all office space, especially behavioral health treatment type spaces. So that is one of the high priorities of the design intent.
And when everything is said and done, this will still cost us a lot less than building a brand-new building from scratch, so.
Correct. And, you know, as we talked about before, it's really a great location for the county going forward with its adjacency to 97 and to the hospital. And it's just in a great area. So we feel like it's a great opportunity to expand county services in Redmond.
I think one of the opportunities is to offer a Redmond Chamber of Commerce coffee clatter there. It's a Friday morning event, but, you know, so maybe, I don't know how long, it's going to be a year, most of a year, ballet. Let's look for a date someday out there where we can share it with the community, too.
Sure. And, you know, there's a few other projects on that campus that provided an update to the Board previously that we're working through, including the second building, which is 236 Kingwood, and developing about 2,000 square feet for a variety of office services like the medical examiner's office, clerk's office, IT, information technology, to have a footprint in campus in Redmond, given the expanded services that are needed internally for our own departments. So we are actively working on finalizing design for that space and then, as well as looking at other opportunities on the campus. So we'll certainly be back in the very near future with some additional updates for you all.
Right.
Did you say clerks?
Yes.
You did. So what are we going to do with the clerk's office there?
So Steve Nissen would be able to speak more specifically to kind of the intent, but the goal is to provide services that folks may normally need to drive to Bend for and perhaps have one or two people in a customer service type capacity with a reception counter there for the kind of walk-in services that folks can only do in person in Bend currently. And I think that's, if I could kind of, hopefully I'm summarizing accurately his vision for that space, but that's my understanding.
I'm sure that'll come back around when we decide to add a remote office for the clerk and understand the level of service.
And you did say 911.
So we're currently, I didn't mention 911, but we're currently looking at the feasibility to utilize a portion of that space for 911 as well. And we're doing a structural review of the building and also a review of the building for emergency power capacity. So I actually got an updated report from our staff this morning, and that is moving along very well, so.
Okay. Well, I'll move approval of Chair signature of document 2021-933, Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Pinnacle Architecture for Design Services for Remodel Project at 244 Northwest Kingwood.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, consideration of approval on signature.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, there you go.
Yes. Well, we're not going to see him on Wednesday.
Yep. For IGA with Oregon Health Authority, this is item number two. Who's kicking this one off? I see.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I think I can get started. I hope you're doing well, had a good weekend, and happy early Thanksgiving to all of you. So Commissioners, this is a consideration of your kind approval and signature of OHA Amendment 169519-3, document number 2021-883. And the recommended motion for your consideration is to move for approval and Chair signature of the document I mentioned. I'm happy to provide some background and policy implications, which are already provided in the agenda packet for your consideration.
So I see there's like seven program elements, it's kind of a list of items in here. Is that the content of this, are those seven items specifically?
Yes, indeed. And I'm happy to, by the way, allow me to, I apologize, I didn't do this earlier. First of all, my name is Nahad Sabdras, the Director of Public Health for Deshute County Health Services, that's for the record, and I'm joined by three of my great colleagues here, Tom Kuhn, Rita Baccio, and Cheryl Smallman. Cheryl, would you like to chime in with regards to Commissioner's question just now?
Sure, yes. The intergovernmental agreement with OHA, Oregon Health Authority, we are receiving funding for those seven elements. The majority of those program elements are rollover funds from last fiscal year, so it's adding about 512,000 new money that we did not anticipate in the budget process for fiscal year '22. The majority of that is centered in public health modernization, so you're going to find that in program element 5101 and 5103.
Great, good information. And, yeah, so I was getting to the concept that this is, this is when the Oregon Health Authority was ready to get to these program elements, is probably the process, you know, I'm just, how do we get here at the end of November is what I'm referring to.
Shall you explain the '03? It says A R P A W F. What's W F?
Workforce. So these are federal funds that Oregon Health Authority is putting towards public health and specifically, Tom Kuhn can speak a little bit more to this, but the intent is around bolstering the public health workforce, and they're doing that as part of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the state received.
Yes, I'll just add that these are intended to be one-time funds with a lens at getting us through COVID to give us a little extra, whereas the '01 and '02 funds most likely will continue in future years in some form.
One other, just basic question I have, I don't know what OIP stands for? The P E 01-10 OIP CARES element?
Uh.
Dumped everybody.
Oh, it's only 622,000.
Yeah.
So O is for Oregon.
There you go.
P, I imagine is program, but I've got. So apologies for that, but this money, the 10 and 9, so P 0109 and 0110, these are two of the funding sources that give us some longer view around the transition from an acute phase into recovery and how we can leverage the resources to help transition through this period with a bit of a medium to long-term lens or view on our planning. So specifically 10 can only, 10 can be only spent on vaccination-related activities, whereas 09 has some more flexibility and can be spent on testing and outreach and other core business processes for the response.
On page 18 of our packet.
I think the OIP is Oregon Immunization Program.
Yes, yeah, I think you're right.
And it says immunization of vaccines for children, so a page 18 of our document has that, so it's very specific for that effort.
Correct.
But, yeah, it's interesting, as I say, each one of these is kind of a line item program element, and it's just what gets kind of negotiated and the funding split up by, I'm sure, 36 counties, and this is, these are the final numbers for us. So we knew that we were going to be offering vaccine efforts till the end of the year at least, you know, that was our concept many months ago, so this is the next little bit of funding to keep that going. As I say, this could have been a consent item also, I mean, it's very much kind of the business that was handed to us from the state, the business line. Is there a motion?
I move Board approval and Chair signature of OHA number 169509-3, document number 2021-883.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
I do have a question, Nahad, is this only COVID vaccinations, or is it the other vaccinations that people have fallen through the cracks on with their children?
Cheryl, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, if we're referring to 0110 OIP, that's for COVID vaccination. Cheryl, is that your understanding as well?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Fine, thank you for your time. Happy Thanksgiving again.
Thanksgiving.
Yes, and boy, did you, your team went big on Saturday, Nahad. I'm surprised you aren't talking about it. They looked really good.
Commissioner, one thing you may not be privy to is that my dear colleague Cheryl is a grad from MSU, Michigan State, so I will never say anything in public or privately about this game as though it never existed.
That's a really smart idea, Nahad.
The money person.
We do not want to say anything. Yes, sorry, Cheryl, we know how it feels.
Thank you for that compliment, Commissioner. Have a good one.
Okay, item number three, consideration of signature of document for a First Amendment to a lease with Jbar J Youth Services. Christie Bollinger is going to join us for this, and then, yeah, First Amendment, they're in there now, huh?
Yeah, good afternoon. For the record, Christie Bollinger, Deschutes County Property Management. So we're here today to ask the Board for consideration of Board signature of document number 2021-919, a First Amendment to the lease with Jbar J Youth Services. In essence, this First Amendment would reduce their square footage by 144 square feet. We, just to refresh your memory, back in July, we renegotiated a lease, and at that time, they still needed the same amount of square feet, and then they came back to us recently. We actually have D V Holcomb here with us, our newest director, so if you have any questions specifically about the program or whatnot, she would be here to answer those questions. So just basically asking for your consideration to execute the First Amendment to reduce the square footage.
So the only question I would have, maybe this is for D V, is just the flow of the space, as in, you know, is there overlap or any common uses of the areas, or is it very much just separate operations and wave at each other in the parking lot kind of thing?
Yeah, thank you. For the record, D V Holcomb, Community Justice. The space that Christie's talking about, there are two office spaces up in the main second floor of the Juvenile Division, where currently Treatment Services, Behavioral Health Treatment Services for youth with sexual offending histories takes place. So the provider of that is going off and creating his own shingle, he's got his own shop, so he won't be needing that space anymore. So Jbar J no longer needs that space for him since he won't be providing those services under their auspices. But as far as flow and stuff, yeah, those youth and those clients, which were our clients as well, very shared clients, would come in and use the same space as other youth and other clients, so.
Yep, yep, that was kind of my question. Great, thank you.
So that particular service provider kind of going out individually, that's not a, that doesn't, that's not any kind of indicator of Jbar J's kind of continuing need for space in the juvenile facility? I mean, whether that's growing or shrinking, this is just kind of like a one-off, you know, unusual, small piece of that overall relationship?
Yeah, I would agree with that characterization. Their main service that is used as far as lease space in our facility is for their residential program, which is on the first floor, one of the wing, or actually a whole side of the detention facility. So that programming is continuing on, as is, they still have the same capacity needs and service delivery kind of model. This isn't really just one smaller section of what their total youth services package was.
Is there a motion?
I move Board signature of document number 2021-919, a First Amendment to a lease with the Jbar J Youth Services, and I do want to thank them for all they did with Veterans Village. Not part of the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Which is the thanking them for participating with the Veterans Village. Anything else?
I mean, I'm going to vote yes, no matter what, but just to, you know, a kind of broader question, for what Jbar J wants to do, is this the right space? Or would some other kind of space be, you know, like better suited to, you know, their particular needs? Or, yeah, I mean, are they there because it's pretty good and like, you know, and the price is right? Or would, you know, in the ideal world, would they be in something slightly different?
You know, that's probably a best question for them, and we could, I'd be happy to facilitate a conversation at some point if you were interested, but I would say, from our perspective, it's kind of the perfect space. It's almost uniquely positioned to fit what their need is. Their program is a, it's formally a voluntary program, but for all intents and purposes, it acts very much as a secure custody kind of program. It's highly regimented, the youth are very high risk, they're usually coming off of parole or they're on a parole or probation violation. They're youth who have already sort of blown through the county set of services and moved on to the state. So they're kind of operating in a pretty regimented, structured, you know, level-based program, and it would be very difficult for them to find a spot anywhere that would kind of meet that need, since our program or our facility is basically designed around that exact same thing, with the one exception of, you know, closed locked rooms. So, for example, we can turn that off really easily. So the youth rooms, their actual rooms that they sleep in are not locked, because we can turn that off, you know, at the control level within the facility. So I'd say it's pretty well-suited.
That's helpful to understand, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good discussion. Item number four, consideration of an order authorizing property manager to execute a lease.
All right, so we're here today to ask the Board for their consideration, for your consideration of Board Order Number 2021-081, authorizing the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute the lease and associated documents with Flex Force Medical Staffing and Aero Appraisal to lease space located at 703 North Large Street, specifically Suite B in Sisters. So we're excited to report, we got a really viable offer to lease the vacant space previously occupied by MidOregon Credit Union. So we're on a kind of a tight timeline, they'd already given notice to their landlord and are hoping to occupy the space by December 1st. At that point, they'll complete a minor tenant improvement, which will include removing some of the woodwork in the reception area, some carpet replacement, and be ideally fully functional, operational by January 1st of 2022. So happy to answer any questions about that.
So is this two entities we're signing a document with, or one entity and they're just kind of doing two different, or?
In conferring with County Council, they preference was two leases, so this will be mirrored leases, and we'll reference each entity in each lease, so there's a cross-reference point.
Very good. Well, it's exciting to be able to get that out there.
Yes, thank you, Christie. I know we've had it empty for a while, so it's excellent news that we'll have someone in there.
Very good.
I just wanted to ask a sort of bigger picture question of, yeah, I'm trying to understand why we own this building? And, because, you know, I don't think that the county is really, you know, it's not our intention to be a major commercial property, real estate manager, but we do, you know, this building hosts our Sheriff's Satellite Office. So is that, is that basically why we own this building? Because it is a good place to have the Sheriff's Office, and then we just have these other two spaces that we rent out, you know, kind of because we own them, or?
So the property owner made that property available for sale, so that was one point. Sheriff's Office is in that building, and they have been for quite a while. Also, the city of, so, because I was involved with this transaction, the city of Sisters has a contract for sheriff services to be city patrol services, remember? So there's kind of the permanency of the, they don't have a police force, but they are contracting with the Sheriff's Office. So when it became available, it was a discussion about, okay, do we just make a long-term commitment to have that facility, or do we pay escalating, you know, rents and lease rates? So that was a choice, and it was only a couple of years ago now that we even purchased the building. MidOregon was in there at the time, so we knew we were buying a kind of a multipurpose building, so, and growth of services, you know, at some point, Deschutes County may be using it for other purposes, possibly. Those are some of the points that I can remember.
Very good. Yes, it definitely seemed to help our Sheriff's Office there. Very happy they're there, and I know the city of Sisters is extremely happy with the service they're getting. I was just talking with Officer Hudson the other night at the Marines' birthday party, and, you know, it's really a wonderful relationship, and the fact that they actually are paying so much attention to Sisters, I think it's really helping. So it seems like it's a win-win, and I think we got a fairly decent price when we purchased this building in 19, did we not? Did we close it in 19?
Yep, July of 19.
Yeah, so it seems to be working, and it is, you know, it's in a convenient location.
Does that help?
So.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I still, I wonder about, kind of, again, the management of commercial real estate, you know, and leases and all of that. Yeah, I definitely understand and appreciate that we want a good space, a stable space for the Sheriff's Satellite Office, but.
Yeah, don't they take the significant portion of the square foot? Yeah, they have 2,500 square feet, so, almost half, not quite half, but if they ever need to grow, at least we'll have that capacity there. And I know this space was also looked at as a warming shelter, and feedback was that it really wasn't exactly what the other tenants would want. So that's why that didn't happen, and fortunately, some actual renters in the community stepped up, I believe, or where are they from, Christie? Do you have any idea?
They're in the Sisters area, I think they've just outgrown their office space.
Okay, good.
And Commissioner Chang, so you're, we'll hold Board, so you're aware, we did check with the Sheriff's Office to see if there was any interest in expanding into this vacant space, and at the time, the Sheriff had declined, so we'll definitely revisit that in the future.
Great.
So I move approval of Board Order Number 2021-081, authorizing the Deschutes County Property Manager, Christie Bollinger, to execute the lease and associated documents with the Flex Force Medical Staffing LLC and Aero Appraisal LLC to lease space located at 703 North Large Street, Suite B, Sisters, Oregon 977-59.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number five, transient room tax update. Big dollars. It'd be good to kind of look at the big picture here, the history, just Stephen the memo reminding us the 1975 start date and this whole process.
Been around a while.
Thanks.
Just talking to the slides today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Greg Munn with Deschutes County Finance Department, and you've got a copy of today's slides are also up on the screen. So today, what I'd like to walk you through is, I guess it's more of a transient room tax one-on-one rather than necessarily an update, but the intention of the conversation is to go back to the beginning of time when the room tax program started in the county and build forward on that, and just give you a real stable background on the program to date, where we're at. We'll talk about funding, where we're at with funding, there's an interest in some information on our unallocated room tax balance, some comparable information to other cities and counties who are also participating in the program, there's some information on the state as well. So the idea is to give you a sort of well-rounded information on room tax, and I think that this will be a good session that'll lead us into the Budget Committee meeting in December, and then also into the budget deliberations next year for FY '23. So with that, we can take the next slide, please. And I pretty much just mentioned this, but discussion topics are, you know, historical background of local and state, the history in the local and state, and legislation around that. Interestingly, the program, we operated independently up until about 2003, so there was not really any regulations or rules around room tax programs. We'll talk about eligible uses of TRT and how that changed in 2003. I've got a nice graphic on the county collection history, and again, where we were collecting at a pretty normal and stable rate until the pandemic hit in 2021, which took a lot of us by surprise, including me. Give you an update on the 2021 budget, what other counties are doing in terms of rate and spending, and then some input on, public input that we received back in June. Next slide, please. Okay, so room taxes, Commissioner DeBonne, as you mentioned, was first levied in the county in 1975, was a 5% rate. And up until that point, or I should say, since then, we've, before 2003, we increased it two times, so we added a 1% to that in 1980, and then another 1% in 1988. So this is all before 2003. Before 2003, there was no statute explicitly authorizing the tax, it was imposed under the county's general taxing authority, and there were no restrictions on the use, largely, they were 100% discretionary. In terms of Deschutes County, we spent. In terms of Deschutes County, we spent, of the 7%, the first 6% we spent on a ratio of tourism promotion at 20% and general county rate, operations at 80%. And that was mostly COVA and the Sheriff's Office in terms of those two items. In 1988, we added the 1%, and that was spent on the Welcome Center. That fell underneath the description of tourism facilities, and also some funds went to, additional funds went to tourism promotion. Next slide. So in 2003, it was state legislation, and it really did two things. One is it enacted a state-level room tax that was originally at 1%. It's now 1.5%. It's changed over the years, and it placed restrictions on local spending. And the state side of those funds was essentially spent for, spent on travel Oregon. So there's, you're probably familiar with that. There's a big website and grants and programs around the state intended to enhance tourism in the state. But for us, it imposed some new local rules, and what it basically said is we had to take the ratio of our spending between tourism and non-tourism and use that ratio moving forward for any new spending that we enacted. So the, at the time, if you see a little graphic over on the right-hand side, pre-2003, you'll see that tourism, we spent almost 941,000 in that one year, and general purposes was a little over 2 million. So the relationship is not exactly one-third, two-thirds, but for the sake of the conversation, we'll just call it one-third, two-thirds. One-third was spent on tourism promotion and facilities, tourism-related, and two-thirds was spent on general county purposes, and most of that was with the Sheriff's Office. Next slide. What happened after 2003? So part of the rule of, of the 2003 legislation, the new rules said that any new tax that were imposed, 70% of that new tax must be spent on tourism promotion and facilities, and the remaining 30% can be used for general county purposes. Now, those numbers seem like a coincidence. They're not. They just happen to be that split that's very, very close. So the first 7% was roughly a 30-70 split, tourism, general county purposes, and the last 1%, which was enacted in 2014, was just the reverse of that. So 70% of that is spent on tourism, and 30% is available for general county uses. So in 2014, we added the 1%, and as we've seen in the budget, and it actually shows in this little graphic here, you can see the new 1% that the 70% is spent on Fair and Expo-related operations, and the balance so far has been decided during the budget process of 30% has been placed in the Fair and Expo Reserve. Any questions on that before we move forward? It's kind of a lot to digest.
So that original 3169, that was just because, that, that was our local jurisdictions' historical allocation, and then it got locked in by the state legislature's choice? Is that what that is?
Yeah, it was immediately before July of 2003, whatever that ratio got locked in moving forward.
So other jurisdictions around the state could have very different numbers? Yeah, I didn't know that. I thought ours was the same as everybody's on that, any amount that was there. Learn something new every day.
So the, at this point, the total TRT charged on vacation rentals or hotel rooms out in the county is 8%?
That's right.
A comparison, I, I, I feel like it's, it's significantly more inside the cities, but.
It is.
Okay.
I've got a graph that'll show that.
Okay, that's coming.
All right, next slide. So what does all that mean for us today? This is just a quick snapshot, looking back. You've probably seen this graphic before, back to 1999. The vertical bars, orange-colored bars there, represent the total collections. You can see that, you know, back in 1989, we were collecting around $3 million a year in room tax, and it was sort of stable, a little blip there during the recessionary years, and then it started to grow after that, until we get to 2021 and 2022. And as you remember, during the budget process, there, there was some concerns that we would see a drop in room tax revenue, and we had budgeted for that, and were concerned about that, and we ended up seeing just exactly the opposite. The horis-, what looks like a horizontal line running right down the middle of that graph is the actual tax rate, and the only thing you can see maybe is, at 2014, you'll notice there's a little blip up. That's the 1% increase that occurred. So it was 7% before that, and then in 2014, it went to 8%. Next slide. The next slide, here's just a snapshot of the 21-22 budget, and there's two pieces here. I want to just talk about where we're at now, projection-wise, that we're three months, or a third of the year into, a third of the way into the year versus our budget, and also a little bit of a picture on where we, where I think unallocated fund balance is going to be at the end of the year. So in that first, on your left-hand side, you can see the FY '22 budget, projecting collections of $11.6 million, and the projection now, which will be in the finance report next, is about $14.4 million. So we were fairly conservative budgeting this next year, but again, apparently, we, there's been a lot more use, short-term utilization than we had really expected. So that's a pretty significant change, only three months into the year, $2.7 million.
And then if you look at inflation, hotels are really high. I think they're like at 25% or something for prices going up. I don't know if it's relevant here, but that's a national number.
Well, that could, that is relevant because the, the resulting TRT is a, is a factor of a rate and a, and a price, and rate hasn't gone up, and, and utilization, so those three factors are really impacting that. If you look down the, not, not the project, the budget of the projection column, but the change column, you can see where that increase is projected to be spent. That first item of 766,000, because COVID's contract is on a percent basis, for every increase in dollar that we receive in room tax, a certain percent of that goes out to COVA. It's the same with the distribution to the tourism facilities line item with the Fair and Expo. Again, that's largely the 1% that was enacted in 2014, so whenever that goes up, more funds go to the operation of the fair, fairgrounds. And then the next biggest piece, if you slide almost all the way down to the bottom, you'll see a number of 1,679,000. That's the unallocated, those are the funds that have not been allocated, so. And where does that put us in terms of fund balance? The graphic to the right, again, is, shows our budget, and then our projection, and the change, and essentially, the, the message there is, there's two, two line items, I should say. One is our unallocated fund balance, and then one is the Fair and Expo Capital Reserve. I'll just focus on the unallocated for now. And I've highlighted that down towards the bottom, our projected ending fund balance as of now, the unallocated is 10.4 million. And we started the year at 6.2.
Craig, under general county purposes, that other category, what, what's in there?
So that is justice court. There was, during budget, decision was made to fund part of that. As a result of the, I think I've got this right, as a result of the pandemic, there was less activity. People weren't going out, so the, the, I believe it was mostly around moving, automobile moving violations. I'm not saying that right, but, so there was a, so the intent of the room tax was to shore them up during the pandemic. And then the other piece was our health services, restaurant inspections. So instead of making a rate adjustment, those funds were used to hold that rate adjustment down. Those are the two pieces.
Thanks.
All right, next slide. So this, I wanted to give you a quick picture of the state's room tax collections and what's been going on there. So if you look all the way to the left, you can see where the room tax program at the state level started in 2004, and they've pretty consistently, over the last, you know, 10 years or so, collected, you know, right around $10 million. And until 2016, when they, when it really started to increase, and this only goes through 2018, so we don't get to see the impact of the pandemic, but you get to see the impact of the rate increase from 1 to 1.5%. Next slide.
Are there numbers from like 19, not, and 20, not available?
Weren't available.
Okay. Gee, I'm surprised.
Yeah, this was the latest that was on their website. So the next graphic is our, just a snapshot of lodging sales by region, and again, this is 2018 data, so it's a little bit dated, but it, at least it would give you an order of magnitude picture, looking back a few years. And you can see, obviously, the Portland metro area was far outstripped anybody else in the state, obviously, with their lodging sales. And then from there, it's, it's pretty tight with the Willamette Valley, us, and our friends at the beach. It would be very interesting to be able to see this picture now and see what's probably has changed significantly. If I get a chance to get that data, I'll definitely share it with you, because I'm curious about it as well.
Well, apparently Alaska has quit flying from Redmond to Portland. I'd read that in The Nugget the other day. I thought that was rather significant, you know. Anyway, yeah, I'd love to see the numbers now.
Yeah. All right, next slide. So this slide's the picture of our tax rates that I pulled up off the state, and some of our local jurisdictions are included in here, and other tourist destinations. So you can see here, and, and I didn't, there was no real science depicting other than that. Clatsop County, their rate is 11.5. They're the top of the, of the tourist-related destinations, 1.5%. And all the way down, just for some color, is Multnomah County at 5.5%. So while Multnomah County only has a rate of 5.5, they, their sales, that applied to a massive amount of sales in the previous graphic. And we are a third from the bottom there, at 8%. Next slide. So one of the questions was, that we've talked about, is where are, where are these funds being spent around the state at the local level? And there was a fairly consistent response that the, at least in terms of the new, new funding that, or the new post-2003 revenue, that that was following pretty much a 70-30 split. So 30% or, yeah, 70-30, so 70% being spent on tourism, and then the other 30% going towards, a lot of it was going into the general fund to support law enforcement, to support the operation of the county. But these are just a few items that stood out, is comments that are received, you know, from, obviously, law enforcement, you know, there's some money spent in public roads and drainages, especially that went to tourist-heavy areas, like a beach parking area, a road that took you just there. Park improvements were a big deal, campgrounds, general fund, of course, education on tourism, and fire protection education. Next slide. And this is simply a comparison of, of how funds are being spent between the city of Bend, and there's no message here other than if there's a difference, and, and our collections. Now, the graphic on the left being the city's, this is their projected 22 collections and how they plan to spend it. This was out of Visit Bend. I, this number is probably out of date now. It was for the FY '22 budget, but it gives you a general idea of where those funds are going. Our number on the right, and the pie shape on the, on the right, is, that's our current projection. Those are dollars that we think at this point, it's our most current projection, we'll be collecting through the end of the year. So this might be interesting, just to kind of eyeball and look at the two differences. There's no real message there other than, you know, we're, we're neighbors, we're involved in all this together, and here's how one is spending, and how the other is, is budgeted to spend right now as well. Next slide. And then last but not least, is just the public input. Received several emails after the June 3r-, or the June article that was in the Bulletin about excess, or additional room tax unallocated funds, and it's kind of across the board, but you can, I don't need to probably read all of these, but, you know, everywhere from new mountain bike trails to impacting the negative economic impact of the pandemic. So, kind of soup to nuts. And these weren't filtered, this is just what we received, so I thought it'd be interesting for you to take a look at what the public, how the public responded to that. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions?
When, when, this chart that shows how the rates that we're charging are a lot lower than other counties and other cities, if we were to add to our current 8%, 70% of that would go to tourism promotion?
That's right. Or tourism facilities.
Tourism facilities. Interesting.
In increasing, it does require a vote. Any increase, yes, to go to the voters.
So having this discussion today kind of puts a mindset or a little direction around, you know, if we call it unallocated transient room tax, that's an internal terminology. My point, it could be general fund also, and it looks like the city of Bend calls it general fund, which mean, either way, it's, it's a discretionary decision business case about how we want to spend these dollars. The budget officer, I think, you know, we started calling it unallocated transient room tax because it, it was grow, I mean, I don't know why specifically, but I assume because it was growing more than anticipated, instead of just letting it get to the general fund without really a track record, it's like, oh, well, let's just hold this off to a, I don't, would you call it, is it in a fund, or what, you know, what?
It's in a fund, and it's simply sitting, you could, you could call it, I think your terminology of discretionary is probably the best way.
Discretionary.
Yeah, discretionary. And it just hasn't been purposed yet. And probably mostly why we're talking about it now is, has to do with that blip that started in 2021, that was, I tried to even run a trend line through that to, to explain this, and it's such a difference between our collections annually up until two, you know, the two, last two years, that I wouldn't even show it.
Yeah.
So I think that's it, because we've gone from probably an unallocated balance of a couple million dollars per year over the years to now, you know, maybe upwards towards 10 by the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. So it's been documented, now we're analyzing it, and we have requests for it also, but these are possibly not reoccurring funds. I mean, if the market really changes for whatever reason, but I mean, it isn't the permanent tax rate, it isn't tax assessed value, it's just market activity that has, has really gone up recently. And, you know, so we're in that enviable spot to make some great choices about what the things we might want to invest in.
Kind of following on that thought, I mean, do we have any kind of feel for, for whether we'll remain at this level, increase or decrease in coming years? I, I mean, you know, there's, there is the rate, there's the total number of units to rent out there, and then there's the price. I mean, those are the three basic things, right?
Yep. Those are the drivers of the room tax revenue, and I, I almost don't even want to answer that question, because I've tried to answer it several times, and I've been wrong every single time. But I think maybe that's a good conversation at some point with some of our experts in the community, with the COVs, and with some of the, you know, the people who are paying attention to what's going on in the hospitality and tourism industry. I, I've, I've heard that, that we don't, there's an expectation that this won't decline anytime soon, and maybe it won't go up as fast, but I think some real good public input would be useful.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I think it's, I think it's safe to assume.
Well, and I think it's, I think it's safe to assume, we know we have more lodging coming online with Caldera Phase Two. That's going to be coming online. That's been approved, and I can't recall exactly where it is with the master planning process, but that will certainly bring on a number of new units. We don't know about the ultimate outcome of all aspects of Thornburg, but that would come online in several years. So there are certainly, we're certainly not seeing, going to likely see any decrease in the number of units. And just with the continued growth and interest in Central Oregon, it sure seems like the trends are continuing up, maybe not even stable.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And then for the development of having traditionally a destination resort with overnight lodging requirements, that was kind of that built-in subset of rooms that had a transient room tax on them. But all of a sudden, any second home or non-primary dwelling can be overnight rental with the market internet-based rentals, and all of a sudden, it just kind of doubled it. That's maybe one of the dynamics, too, that we need to remember.
Yeah, and unless we put, unless we somehow put a strategy in place, we could conceivably see people build a rural ADU and move into their rural ADU and rent their primary house as vacation rental. So, yeah, the number, I certainly wouldn't expect the number of units to go down. And our rate isn't going to go down. And, I mean, prices, you know, prices may shift over time, and occupancy might, might shift over time. But certainly seems like we're, we're a hot commodity right now. And I, I wouldn't expect that to change too much in the next couple of years. I mean, we, so, you know, maybe we don't want to, we, we want to continue to, you know, kind of be conservative in the way that we budget on a, on a year-to-year basis, but it's, you know, we're not going, we probably aren't going back to 2012 levels anytime soon.
Then again, when the 391, the Senate Bill 391, those are not allowed to be short-term, so long-term rental do not pay this, room tax, do they?
It's 30 days and under.
30 days and under, okay, so they won't be paying it, it's not allowed in that bill to be a short-term. And I thought that was one of the really excellent points of it, considering, what is it, we have 1,200, you know, Airbnbs in Bend in the city? So we definitely need workforce housing. We hear it every day, hear it every hour, you know, so, yes.
Again, the concern I was expressing was that there might be people who, who build a rural ADU and then move into their rural ADU and rent their primary residence.
But I don't think you can do it short-term, though, can you?
It is possible to do that. The bill, the Senate Bill 391 just limits the use of the rural ADU. It doesn't limit the use of the primary dwelling.
Okay.
So the more, the more luxurious we allow people to build their rural ADUs, you know, unlimited garage size, unlimited garage size, you know, you know, the 900 square feet only includes the living space, you know, farther, you know, more than, or just 100 feet touching, you know, within, you know, touching the 100 feet as opposed to within the 100 feet. I think the more risk there is of us enabling people, or, you know, kind of inviting people to build a really sweet rural ADU that then they would just use as their primary residence, and that they can use the old, the old house for something else, which would defeat the, you know, defeat the purpose of, of allowing rural ADUs to promote workforce housing.
That's coming around, that'll be another discussion. So as I say, as a board, is there anything else we want to put direction to, or just kind of the concept? So really, this is setting up for a, a budget cycle. It could be in a proposed budget that there's funds for, or, I mean, when do we see us making decisions as, you know, kind of a board and in a public meeting about distributing funds? You know, because that's what people are sending us email, hey, I got a great idea!
So, so you can do that at any point.
Yeah.
We can take budget action at any point during the year. Normally, outside of, you know, maybe something unusual like this, we would, I would say that, at least it's set up to provide this information initially, get a good foundation underneath us in terms of how this works and what's eligible. Perhaps a conversation with the Budget Committee in December, and then it could roll right into the budget development process after the first of the year, where we'd start really working on this in the, you know, February, March timeframe.
But as a board, we could, you know, pick some of these off and fund something, too, at any time, you know. So there's been discussion about the, some of the, you know, federal recreational assets out there, and I'm looking at the, you know, the trails, campsites, horse facilities, all that. Maybe there is an amount of money that we're ready to pull out and, you know, practice spending.
And I know that the, the, so I sit on the, on the Steering Committee for the Deschutes Trails Coalition now, and they definitely are, have been trying to get their heads around what a, you know, what a program might look like that is complementary to, but not redundant with the program that Visit Bend is, is running, that they call the Bend Sustainability Fund.
Yeah, how do we, how do we complement, instead of, yeah, just double an investment, maybe? Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, and that's definitely, yeah, I mean, just kind of, to kind of show my cards or express what my interests are, I appreciate that these county transient room tax dollars are completely discretionary. We can use them just like we would use the general fund, but I do think that there are certain needs and opportunities created by tourism, and it, in my mind, it's just an appropriate thing to, to use these transient room tax revenues to address those. And so among those would be just what we were talking about, using, using some of these funds to maintain and enhance the recreational amenities, the recreational infrastructure in, in the county, to keep people coming here, you know, that's sort of the golden goose type phenomenon, you know, that's what brings people here, and so we want to maintain those things, and we want to make sure that as more and more people come here, that they can continue to have a quality experience. So that piece, I also very much believe that having a lot of, you know, a very large proportion of the transient room tax revenue that's generated in the county right now is generated from short-term rentals as opposed to hotels. And each one of those short-term rentals is a, is a housing unit that is not available for a long-term rental or for a purchase for, you know, for a home residence. And I'm concerned that that impacts the availability of housing and, you know, by effect, the price of housing. So I, I'm very interested in exploring, using some of these transient room tax revenues to address our, our housing supply shortage and our housing affordability crisis. And, you know, the third, the third kind of bucket or principle that's come up, or, you know, concept that's come up recently is the idea that there are certain communities that are real tourist magnets for, you know, for our county that have some big infrastructure needs. So the Terrebonne wastewater is a, is a good example. And I think you could say that, you know, some of the broadband discussions we've been having with, with Sun River is another good example. Or even, you know, you know, besides infrastructure facilities, like the, the, the police and fire building that they want to, they want, that the Sun River Service District wants to build. I think if there are communities in Deschutes County that are major tourist magnets, and they have infrastructure or facility needs to help them continue to, to, to serve in that way, as, you know, a major tourist draw, that, you know, that the, investing in some of their infrastructure needs is also, you know, put an interesting thing, an interesting idea for using some of these transient room tax revenues.
Because of the fact that Sun River is not incorporated, and also the fact that Sun River has provided over 50% of the room tax revenue, I could definitely see that. You know, they really haven't been acknowledged with their contributions. And if there's any way that we don't keep spending so much money promoting people coming here, between, you know, Visit Bend and Visit Central Oregon, I just feel like, it seems like people know about us now, and, you know, our numbers just continue to grow, especially with the state, when they promoted Smith Rock, and we got up to a million people there. Honestly, do we really want any more than a million people at that park every year? Because it, you know, a lot of little footsteps can create a lot of erosion.
Well, as I say, we have an opportunity to put some direction at this. I mean, I support everything that was said here, you know, when, at what point would be, would be interested in, you know, setting some direction to specific expenditures or investments. I like the idea of diving into some of the tourism asset support investments. I'm trying to say it generically, because if I mention one, they're like, oh, good, they're going to spend money on that.
Right.
Because there's a whole bunch of things we could go there, too. But, yeah, I mean, maybe we set an amount and get it going, you know, even if it's, you know, just some, you know, educated investment, you know, educated choice about what we do. Because then we, we're taking the money, we're putting it out there a little bit, and we can start the conversation knowing, oh, they really are going to spend money on this kind of stuff.
Well, I mean, we've, we've been kicking around that, you know, we, we need to, we need to honor our $1 million commitment under the MOU with, with the city of Redmond for the constructed wastewater treatment wetlands for Terrebonne. Soon? I mean, well, I, I don't know how soon we, we actually need to, we need, we need to turn over some cash, but we, we just made that commitment, so that's, I would, I really would prefer, I like the idea of, of using these dollars for that purpose as opposed to ARPA funds. And, you know, so that's kind of a, an immediate term, you know, thing that we could, that we could explore. And also, yeah, the idea of tourism attracting amenities, recreational infrastructure. I would love to, you know, set a, set a time to get a presentation from the Deschutes Trails Coalition, or from, you know, Visit Bend about their Bend Sustainability Fund, or from, you know, to have COVA come and, you know, give, share thoughts, or, you know, get some of those people to come and flesh out some ideas for us.
So now, you know, this is getting to be the end of November, so then we think about, do we want to do something in December or January, or, you know, set up for the spring, maybe?
Actually, I want to see, I want us to have our budget meeting, our half-year budget meeting. I think that's really more, more appropriate at this moment. We're going to be doing that in a couple of weeks, and, you know, it, it looks really good at this moment, but you never know. Things can change, and it's always much better to be conservative, truly, and to be in this position. And look at it then, see where we're going, and we're going to have our finance report today. And what is it, a third of the year so far?
But I'm just, yeah, I was just trying to scope.
I really, yeah, I, I could get it, but I don't really want to spend any money today.
After the December mid-year budget meeting, that sounds, sounds like a good, so maybe sometime in January?
Because, yeah, it'd be fun to set up for some projects, if there's, you know, weather-dependent things that could be done in the spring or early summer, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess that, that's my thought. If we're going to make an investment for any of the federal asset, tourism asset kind of stuff, set it up for next, early next year.
Yeah, yeah, I mean,
So that gives us something to work back from, generally.
Things like campgrounds and trails, I mean, people could do some good work in, you know, April and May, so that those, those facilities would be in prime working order for the, the tourist season this summer.
And don't forget Smith Rock. I'm not sure how much the state is allocating there. I know the state has been handing out money like crazy, so, you know, that's another thing that does need some updating. And I do believe they have a master plan.
Right? I know that, so, so some of the stewardship groups that work with, with state parks, they would be able to come in and apply for, for, you know, a grant, essentially, to do a project. I know, I know there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of really good work already happening in Smith Rock, and I'm sure it's just that the, if there's not more, it's just a capacity constraint. And, you know, these funds are an opportunity to increase, to increase that capacity.
Commissioner Chang, you mentioned a million dollars from these funds possibly for the Terrebonne sewer investment. Why opposed to ARPA funds? I mean, I don't understand why. Why would there be a motivation for that?
I don't, I don't think of Terrebonne's wastewater situation as being a, a result of the pandemic. I do, I do, I do think of Terrebonne's wastewater situation being a result of being heavily loved by tourists.
Oh, that's good. I mean, that's, that's an answer already. I was just trying to understand why.
Yeah.
That's exactly, good.
So I, I mean, I feel like we should be using the ARPA, ARPA funds for COVID, you know, to contain COVID and to recover from COVID.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anything else on this? I mean, it's good discussion, try to have some, just some kicking around in public meeting kind of things, so.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else, other than just, I think it was really good to set a foundation, and we can revisit this at the mid-year.
Yep, that's the plan, then.
So you're not telling us to double the rate or anything like that? You know?
We just, I mean, we just heard that if we raise the rate, then 70% of it goes to tourism promotion, which is, I mean, you know, with the, some of the recreation infrastructure things we're talking about, you could possibly frame, you could frame those as tourism facilities, maybe, but, you know, it, it seems very, pretty clear that for, for increases of tax, that there's a, there's a sort of a bias towards tourism promotion, and I think, I think we'd all agree that we have a good amount of tourism promotion going on.
Do we have, I don't, did I ask this? Do we have the opportunity to lower this rate like we do our general fund tax rate?
Certainly.
So it's, it's authorized and legalized, but we don't have to utilize the full rate?
And I don't have the details on how the mechanics of that would happen. I'm sure Mr. Doyle would know more about that, but, yeah, you can reduce the rate if you'd like to.
And then, The voters authorized it, they didn't mandate that.
Yeah, okay. So then the first portion of the rate is the one that's most flexible. Yeah, I'm just thinking it through. You know, when we think about raising the rate, what about lowering the rate?
The last 1% has that 70/30 requirement on it, so if we squeeze that last 1% a little bit, then you could actually constrain the amount of tourism promotion dollars.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking the flip side of the concept of adding it would be reducing it, because, as I say, Commissioner Adair, when you mentioned, you know, the, the rate, the, I don't know, the, the market, you know, per-night rate has gone up,
Right.
and the market's supporting it.
That's one of the numbers inflation I'd seen.
You know, so if it was a $100 room, and now it's 175 or something, it's really going up. You know, there's just other variables that could be even toyed with in there.
I know, it's, Just about we don't have a rental car business, right? They're really, yeah, maybe we could expand to that, what do you think?
One point of clarification, it's, it's the 70% isn't for tourism promotion, it's for tourism, which tourism promotion and tourism facilities are a subcomponent. So just want to make sure we get the lingo straight.
But there, it seems like, I mean, if I'm tracking correctly, around the state, there has been a lot of fighting about, about what is a tourist, tourist facility? I mean, that, that, the bar is set very high legally, and, and that's, you know, there's horror stories about people trying to get public restrooms built in Hood River who couldn't do it, because, you know, it's not just tourists who are going to go in there and flush the toilet, it's, you know, it's just regular people who will use it, too. And you can't do that with tourism, you know, tourism dollars. So, yeah, so it's, it's, it's an opportunity, but it's also an opportunity with a lot of, a lot of sideboards around it.
Great, good discussion. Okay. Next item is County Treasure and Finance Report, so a whole different set of numbers. numbers.
Again, Greg Munn from County Finance Department. This is the monthly finance and treasury report for, for activity through October 31st, 2021. These numbers are not audited, but these are what's reported in our general, or in our general ledger or finance accounting system as of that date. So, a couple of highlights on page one. I'll just mention that our portfolio balance is $258 million, which is $30 million more than last month.
There you go. I was gonna say, go ahead and clear the screen, but she's got it.
Yep. And as you know, this time of year is tax collections, so the, the $30 million increase is almost entirely due to tax collections. And of that 30 million or of every dollar we, we bring in in terms of tax, we're, we're a facilitator, we're an agent for the other taxing districts, and we turn around and distribute 80% of that back out. So we hold it for a short time until we can get it back out to them as fast as we can. And in terms of investment income, you can see the little graphic there, $115,000 for the month, that's $6,000 less than what we earned last month. And 187, that's year-to-date compared to, I'm sorry, last, last October was 187,000, so that's $72,000 less. That's pretty significant, this last October compared to the prior October. And then year-to-date, we're down 429,000 for the first three months. I do have hopefully some good news here. See if I can pick this out for you.
Keep looking. We have the funds, that's the good news.
What's that?
We have the funds.
Yes, yeah.
That's the good.
And they're liquid, so we're good to go there. But before the good news, the LGIP rate dropped from 55 basis points to 45 basis points, and that was mid-month. So that's not necessarily the good news. Our overall, return on our overall portfolio is down slightly from 66 to 65. So we're taking leveling out is probably a good thing, you know, not declining as fast. But the good news, if you look down on the benchmarks, and this is the, at least the second month in a row that I've reported this, is the 24-month treasury benchmark is 48 basis points, and last month it was 28 basis points. So we're seeing a significant increase, that's 20 basis points increase. And believe me, I never thought I'd be so excited about 20 basis points.
So that's the, kind of the worldwide banking industry with those bonds, $2 million at a time, that looks like they're going to be up in a couple of years.
Yep, that's right. It's, it's called the, it's, talk about the, the curve, the investment, the.
Yield?
Yield curve, right. And so they're tracking that, so that whole curve has, has, in the out years, has actually grown significantly, which is good.
Can I just backtrack one second? Remember Senator, Representative Bonham was going to give us a million for Terrebonne? Have we, have we put that anywhere? Remember, that was one of his allocations, which, you know, we have several ways to spend it there, and I did hear from J.R. Collier, who's the park director, director, and he said the state has currently 5 million set aside for improvements at Smith Rock. And he, he wondered, well, he wasn't sure what we were going to do, but he was thinking maybe some traffic improvements around. So they, they've actually set up 5 million. So that's pretty significant, I would hope. But we do have a million coming from the state through Senator, through Representative Bonham, which is for Terrebonne.
Well, that'll be good timing with the budget coming up.
I know, that will be really, and I kind of forgot about that number. I mean, you know, that, because we've been dealing with some, you know, the 19 million here and whatever, but that's another million dollars that will help with Terrebonne.
Yep, another piece of the puzzle. So on that theme, the 36-month treasury benchmark, 75 basis points, that was 53 last month, so we're up 22. A little ray of sunshine, it's not much, but it's a little bit. And our maturity, our average maturity is 1.6 years versus 1.85. Again, and I'll show you something here in a minute, that it's, we're trying to put more funds, the redemption period maturity within about two years, so that it'll, it'll be available sooner rather than later. If you go to the next page, there's three graphics there. I just want to point out on the two-year treasury rate, what I just told you about the increase, the significant increase at 20 basis points in the two-year rate, you can see that on the red line where it pops up in the last month, couple of months, so it's a pretty significant increase in the last couple of months. And then the other part, and I mention this every month pretty much, but if you look at the maturity distribution schedule down below, that's a five-year window, and right now we're pushing funds to be in, in the gap that's about two years out. You can see where there's, there's nothing, and then also out in the 2026 timeframe within our five-year limit. The next page is a bit of an eye chart, but this is a complete list of our portfolio, all the investment items that we hold. And you can see that in the blue, hopefully it shows up in blue, these are the items that we've purchased in the last month, and you can see, this is in maturity order, so these are, you can see we're buying them a little bit sooner rather than maturing later with the other items in the portfolio. And flipping the page to the Position Control Summary, we're FTE. One point I'd make is that our unfilled posi, unfilled numbers percentage has gone down. We're still not where we had been historically, at around 6%. We're, but we're down definitely, you can see the trend there from a high of 11.26% in September, we're down to 9.84. The total positions in the county in the month of October increased by 1.4 FTE, and 0.4 of that was a behavioral health specialist that was converted from a six-tenths of a position at the stabilization center, added four tenths to make it a 1.0 position to better balance the scheduling and be a more attractive. It's hard to hire people now for six-tenths of a position that work 212s on a weekend versus a full-time, regular-duration position. And then the other position was the addition in admin, and that was the 1.0 Public Information Officer. All right, on to the financials, the next page is the general fund. You see the dashboard there, I'll just give you some highlights. First off, we're a third of the way through the year. It's flying by. On the graphics there, you'll see the, the resources of $6.8 million. This is just the general fund. And we've received 16.7% of our budget. Now, that compares to last year, at this time, we'd received 9.5 million, so 6.8 to 9.5 million. And the budget percentage was higher, too. That's due almost entirely to the fact that we were receiving so much unbudgeted CARES money at the time. So there's going to, that number is going to be high. If you look at the requirement side, it's the exact same situation except on the expenditure side where we've, we've spent a lot more last year compared to this year, but that was those CARES dollars that were going back out the door.
Greg, I did notice that we're still down 11.2 employees in CDD, and I just wondered, have, have any of those positions been hired in the last couple of days? Because I know they're still really busy. I was looking at finance. Do you know, Nick, if any of those have been filled?
I do know that a couple have been filled. I've signed the offer letters.
Okay, good.
To at least a couple of those employees. And I know that some of those positions, Peter needed to first hire a planning manager to then help fill the, the other positions within the department.
I was just, you know, I know they're really busy and I don't want anybody getting burned out.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so I'll flip a couple of pages if, I don't have my page numbers, but if you go to the Budget to Actuals Countywide Summary, starts with ending fund balance, it's about three or four pages in. And I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the overall county when you combine everything together. If you can find the number down in the lower right-hand corner of $160 million, ending fund balance.
Page 41, maybe?
41, okay. So this is our projected ending fund balance right now as of the end of fiscal '22, and this number, of course, changes as we adjust our revenue projections and our expenditure projections. But that number was 157 last month, so we're in a, we're in a good place, we're, things are going in the right direction as you would expect in a budget, and we're a third of the way through. So that's the big picture. If you flip the page to TRT Fund 16170, probably four or five more pages. What we just talked about is shown here on this financial projection, the TRT room tax projection under fiscal '22, there's a number of 14,390,000. That was just in the presentation before this. Overall, 14.4 million in revenue in those two funds. Last month, that was 13.8. So again, this is just an exercise of reviewing the each monthly, the income that comes in each month, comparing it to prior years, and re-projecting those out. So we'll be seeing this, we'll continually update this as we go through the year.
So Greg, to, just to kind of jump back to the, the prior topic, TRT, and then, and looking at this, can you just say what we, you know, kind of our, our, our reserve or our unallocated TRT for last year, what we're projecting for this year? And that, that may give us, you know, that, that may give us a sense of what we might expect to see in future years.
So if you look at fiscal '22, and if you go all the way to the bottom of the actuals column, and you'll see a beginning fund balance, this would have been the beginning fund balance of July 1 of this year, of 6.2 million. You see that number?
For, okay, for this year, yeah?
Yep, this year, six, beginning fund balance. That's also the ending fund balance for last year. The numbers are the same. So the direct comparison, which I think you're asking, is that's 6,189 compared to our projected ending fund balance at the end of the year, which is a couple of columns over all the way down at the bottom of 10.4 million. And in the previous presentation, I think I showed a delta of 4.2 million over the course of the year, unallocated. So those are the two numbers you want to look at, it's the difference between those two. That'd be the growth.
So this year it might be 4.2 million, and last year it was 4.2 million as well?
Last year, if you look under fiscal 2021 and find the beginning fund balance number under the actuals column of 3,005.
Uh huh.
So not quite 3 million, about 2.6, 2.7 million?
Okay.
So the growth from year to year, not quite doubled, but we're, we're only estimating where we think we're going to be at the end of the year, we don't know yet.
Right.
Yeah. Does that help?
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Real quick on the Sheriff's Office Fund 255. So they were projecting a, last month, a fund balance or ending fund balance of 11.2 million, and now they're projecting 12.3 million. That's a pretty significant change, I just want to point that out. And the reason for that is if you look under the requirements, all those line items under the requirements, they've just projected, and, and most departments do this sometime in the first third of the fiscal year, they reap, they start projecting out where their salary savings is going to be, vacancy savings and all that. So this is all new. So the, so last month, there was no, they hadn't made any new projections. This month, they made a new projection, which reduced their projected cost by the end of the year by 1.1 million dollars.
But we'd really like those positions filled, though, wouldn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Truly.
Yeah.
I know.
And flip a few more pages to Health Services Behavioral Health Fund 274. This is a similar situation that I just mentioned with the Sheriff's Office, they've projected out their salary savings, and you can see it primarily in Personnel Services. You'll see a variance of 2.2 million, which is just a projected forward-looking estimate of savings based on their current vacancies. So their fund balance projection has gone up as a result of that. And that may be about it. The annual fare, we talked about that, that's looking good. The, looking at a fare for the 21 fare, which we're almost there, we have another month to finish, well, a couple of months on this report, but we're physically almost there, it's almost December. But it looks like they're going to end up somewhere around a positive of $400,000, which is about the high-water mark where they were in one of their best years a few years ago. But good to see the fare doing well financially. A couple of years ago, we were having the exact opposite conversation. And that's it for me, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Looks like horseshit. Good to take time to look at the big picture here, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, too.
Yes.
We'll probably see you before then.
Yes, don't eat too much turkey, Greg, remember.
Get you to sleep in front of a football game. Item number seven, report on October 18th, internet outage.
Oh, boy.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Furlong with the Tushus County Information Technology Department. Yeah, so I'm here to report on the incident we experienced on October 18th, where we had an internet disruption outage. It occurred, just to summarize the facts, it occurred approximately 10:15 a.m. that day. We were notified by our, our provider of internet service that the disruption was due to a fiber optic cable that had been severed somewhere between Bend and Seattle. So lots of customers were out of service, and we were later informed during the outage that the damaged cable was ultimately located near a bridge in or around Tacoma, Tacoma, With the location of the cable break identified, our internet traffic was temporarily rerouted to an alternate path to get around that. And ultimately, our services were restored approximately 8:45 p.m. that night. So this.
Is that a long day for you?
Yes, it was.
Thanks for taking care of business. I mean, that was interesting, watching the phones go down and all of a sudden the desktop wasn't working, and, and then we find out it's the whole organization, so that's the moment, you know? I've been here for 10 years now and never even blipped, never had a problem with anything ever, and that was the moment. It all went down for a while.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was pretty extreme, for sure. We, we tried to avoid that, but sometimes you can't.
Yep.
So speaking of impacts, though, yes, you're right, broad across the board in many ways, more so than we ever would have experienced just a few years ago, in fact. So it went in, within moments, our own monitoring devices registered the alarm, service was, was out of, out of service, down. The Help Desk staff almost instantly started getting Help Desk calls from everywhere around the, around the county. People were in the middle of many of their, their business activities, and they now depend on internet service. So the moment that, the very moment that blips at all, they know it, everyone knows it. So then to that end, you know, approximately half of all the county departments are dependent upon the internet for their line of business, their primary duties. And so being cut off from the internet, these departments' operations are severely impacted. So as, as a side note, you mentioned the phones. Yes, the phones, too, are now dependent upon the internet. And in our case, we have four connection points to the public telephone system, two of those four were in a state of failure with that, related to that internet. So this kept, as we experienced, this kept several departments from being able to receive or make outgoing calls from, from county offices. Fortunately, the Sheriff's Office is one of the other four that was not affected, and of course, 911 is completely independent, so it was unaffected as well. At this time in October, approximately 350 county employees also rely on Microsoft's 365 cloud service. also rely on Microsoft's 365 cloud service for some of their other forms of communication, such as email. And so they were also impacted, cut off from their, from their email account, could not send or receive. So can't make a phone call, can't send or receive an email. Kind of a double whammy in terms of that. So fortunately, I guess in this case, we have a lot of workforce that works remotely. And because they work remotely, their internet connection was different and thus unaffected. And they were able to actually continue working in many ways. So that was the good news. As far as incident response goes, you know, the IT department immediately contacted our provider, and they told us, you know, correctly, it was, it was upstream. It was their providers that had faulted, and then we, by association, our internet service faulted. And so they were working on it, it was out of our hands. So meanwhile, we worked on seeing what we could do with telephone services and making use of the, the functioning connections that we did have. And as, as to that end, we were able to work with our carrier for the public telephone system and our, our on-premise phone system and make some programming changes there, rerouting the logic between incoming and outgoing calls. And we were able to restore a great deal of functionality approximately 4:45 p.m. So that's, that's now part of our regular design now. So that should be more resilient in the future. Speaking of future plans, we want to work toward providing the resilience we need now that so many products and services are delivered via the internet. It's not just a convenience, it's almost a necessity now. So long-range planning. The IT department had already been discussing plans for resilience and redundancy of internet connectivity. We're certainly now going to move those plans up to make them more immediate as opposed to future. So, yes, redesign incorporates services of two direct providers at our data center. It's not enough to have redundant connections with a single provider, and that provider themselves having redundant connections. We, we have learned you actually have to have redundant connection to your on-premise from two separate businesses. And that's what we're going to achieve. Lessons learned. Almost all software products are, are being delivered as a service. And will continue to do so in the future, we expect more and more. And so software as a service makes the internet a necessity. There's even infrastructure as a service, we need to get into it. So reflecting back on, on previous outages, we can't recall a, a time that was quite as dramatic in duration as this last outage that we just experienced. Approximately 20 years ago, there was a similar scenario. But it was, it was long-distance phone lines. I don't know if you were all here at that time. But it was, a traffic accident had, had severed some fiber optic communication cables. And you couldn't make a long-distance call into or out of the central Oregon area. That lasted for a good day or more. But since then, loss of infrastructure has been built, and we're no longer at that risk. So we're very confident we can achieve the redundancy that we really need moving forward. And that's our, that's our plan.
So do we have a price? You said it's not inexpensive. Do you have a projected cost? Are we going to hear any number today or in the near future?
We, we do have some estimates for the physical equipment. The total number of components varies depending on some decision choice options that we, we need to select among. So I could give you a, a guestimate, roughly 75,000, including some professional services to help configure and program that equipment for our particular needs.
So not 750, but 75,000?
75,000.
Okay, that's better than what I could have imagined.
Right. Fortunately, it wasn't what I expected, yeah. I thought it was going to be much more, but pleasant surprise that it's attainable.
I know, and, you know, we really, we can't afford to have that happen again.
No.
We were really lucky the day that it happened. What, wasn't it Tuesday or something?
It was a Monday, Monday morning.
Okay.
And then a true alternate route, I'm sure, you know, you, you can't buy it from somebody who has the same backend as the next guy. So a true alternate route is the interesting thing.
Right, so during the outage, I made a phone call to a few of my counterparts in the other, rest of this organization and a few others outside of Deschutes County, found out who their providers were and were they functioning. And so I now have. Yes.
So you found out who was up when we were down.
Right, so I, I have the answer for that question, yeah. I know who to do business with.
Yeah, well, who's alternate, yeah.
This experience makes me wonder, you know, as you said, software is delivered through the internet, or, you know, as, as a service now, as opposed to just, you know, a piece of, you know, a piece of software installed on your, on your computer. In, in a worst-case cybersecurity-type situation, would we be sim, would we be, basically be as crippled as we were that day?
Initially, you would be, yes, yes. And you see these scenarios played out on television, fictional television programs as well. But yes, in the first few moments, you would be for several minutes. But with a cybersecurity attack, you, you could theoretically be able to return some services to functioning while shunning and blocking the attack and those who are committing it.
Well, that, that's good.
One of the interesting aspects of what happened here, along with cybersecurity, in light of Dave, your email this morning about the state law that requires all public meetings by the elected body to be available to the public remotely, it's just interesting, how do, how do we navigate that if the board needs to meet in an emergency meeting, yet there's no technology available to, to comply with that law? It's just an interesting dynamic we have to really think through. So I certainly appreciate the redundancy that we're exploring so that it doesn't, not only cripple county operations, but also the ability for the Board of County Commissioners to meet, to convene, to conduct necessary county business.
Had it been a natural disaster that, that severed the, the connections, I mean, it could obviously take on multiple carriers. An alternate business plan, a business continuity plan, would need to be in hand and to be able to address, how do we conduct business under adverse conditions? And still meet as, as best we can the regulatory requirements, yes. Each business unit should, should have a business continuity plan that addresses that fact.
We have emergency declaration processes that could get us, you know, address some of those issues if necessary, you know, declared emergencies and whatnot. So I, I think we could navigate through if we had to. There may be some windows where there wouldn't be Zoom or live stream access to a meeting, but we'd, we'd still continue with the county's business.
Oh, we can, yeah, pretty much record on, you know, at least audio on any meeting that we would have, and just thinking through the disastrous scenarios. And document our choices, you know, we chose to meet and we have an audio recording, and this is the best we could do with where we're at, you know. So then you can go backwards and say, okay, this is how we got here and why we did it.
Yeah, we cross that bridge when we get there, I suppose. But yeah, there are avenues to get there, and we wouldn't be just shut down, precluded from, from moving forward.
Okay, well, as I say, thank you for joining us. And this is the first time you've been to a Board of Commissioners meeting in a while, maybe, I mean, because usually it's Joe. So, but thank you for the update, you know, this was serious business, it's a big organization, a lot of services are provided. And we are really using a lot of online software as a service tools now, too. So it's a reminder for the whole organization, just take a moment, think about the big picture, what if? What if we just totally unplugged? Because that's what you have to do when you, used to be, when you had a computer, you just assume, if your hard drive totally dies one day and you can't get anything off of it, then what? And this is that other scenario, if the internet's out, which never, never felt like this until recently. If the internet's out, how much panic do you go into, or, or what's the backup plans? Amazing.
The vulnerability as well as, you know.
A huge asset, yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. So that's it for our published agenda items. So we could probably some, a few updates and other items. I know that Board of Commissioners was at an Association of Oregon Counties conference last week. So the three of us were in Eugene, getting to different sessions and making connections. So that was a pretty valuable time. Any takeaways from that, any thoughts?
One of the, one of the sessions I attended at AOC that I'll be interested in discussing, exploring more with, with the full board is, was the community benefit contracting session. That, so this is a program that Lane County has implemented, where basically they, they have, they ask that contractors who are interested in bidding on county projects meet certain, you know, meet certain criteria in terms of, you know, providing benefits to, to their employees and also contributing to workforce development through apprenticeship programs. And one of the, you know, one of the really important take, take-home messages from that session was that after a year of implementing this program in Lane County, they've, they've, they've discovered, one of their big worries was, well, if we, if we put these requirements on, on entities who want to bid on contracts for, for the county, is it going to drive up costs? And one of the things that they learned was that it did not drive up the costs for the projects that had been implemented with these contracting requirements at all. So that, that was an exciting thing to learn, that you can kind of put in place some criteria that ensure that workers are, are getting good, good wages and benefits, and it doesn't necessarily even have to cost you more.
Thank you. Mr. Nader? Just any thoughts about AOC? So we didn't do it last year, we got to do it this year and see a bunch of people.
It was, you know, it was excellent to get together and see what AOC is doing. It, it was, you know, there's nothing like being together in the same room with people that we serve with and getting different ideas. I just thought it was fascinating that about the same time I was at that water meeting, I'd heard California in 2014, a huge bond issue passed for water storage. 2014, seven years later, they have built absolutely zero. And maybe they'll have something built by '24, and that's truly, when you're listening to the people from Klamath County, truly that is not what we want to happen here in Oregon. So lots of good things were said about the Deschutes Basin, but you know, we, we have that issue with where's the food grown? And, you know, Norwalk definitely has, it's, it's something that we've got to really worry about because they raise a lot of food up there. And it's in Jefferson County.
Reemphasizes the point that the, the best place to find new water is through conservation, because we have a lot of opportunities in the Deschutes Basin.
So after AOC, I was able to go to Portland, and I went to track down their homeless outreach person, Multnomah, Portland. And then I ended up at a ribbon-cutting for a facility on kind of northeast Portland. And I saw Speaker of the House Tina Kotek and Commissioner Shesha Jayapal and Deborah Cofory, and a city councillor also. So I was able to communicate with Speaker of the House a little bit about our needs. And the, the message was, let's talk, so I'm going to reach, reach out again and see what we can do. You know, if there's discussions at the short session or the governor, yeah, so that was the Speaker of the House. And then also, there was a quarterly meeting with the governor today, in fact, and I mentioned the same item to her. You know, let's, let's figure out what land use and, you know, siting and, you know, the 30-day campground limitations, just, we got to lay some more stuff on the table, you know, just to get all their options out there. So as I say, switching from Friday to today, I was on a joint meeting with the other chairs of around the state, with the commissions, with the governor. She mentioned a couple of things. One of the topics that came up was masks and, you know, the mandate opposed to a recommendation. And, you know, the numbers are still up, but there was definitely some commission leadership asking for the mandates to go away. So that was just a discussion that kind of went around. Homeless was mentioned a few times, I, I had brought that up. She mentioned a special session maybe planned for in the near future to get millions of dollars of rental assistance out. Those would be federal dollars that the state can get clear on and then help, help move it out. And yeah, of course, along with the masks was vaccine mandate discussion, too. You know, the federal government, if that vaccine mandate comes through. Governor mentioned that she could possibly make it more strict. And as I say, there was opinions shared on that, so we don't need to go any farther with that.
Yes, I believe OSHA court system did stop it, so at this moment in time at least. And where was she? You know, she was at the, she was at our meeting, our convention, two years ago. She showed, she came on Thursday afternoon, I didn't see her this time, did you see her?
She was in Washington DC for the signing of the infrastructure bill.
Okay, oh yes, we need to spend more money.
She apologized for not being there, she did start off the meeting with that.
That infrastructure bill is going to do some really good things for Deschutes County and central Oregon.
That's right, look at inflation, it's just truly not a good thing. Look at gas prices, food prices, it's just, what is it? How many trillions of dollars have we spent in the last year?
Yeah, we need, we need the roads, we need the public transit, we need the water and wastewater infrastructure, we need the work in the forests, there's a lot of good things.
No one's going to be able to afford to drive on the roads with the gas prices going up, what, Oregon's adding 2 cents to the gallon for gas tax? More?
I'll still use the road. The one, one other thing for other items I'd, I'd mentioned is, you know, when we had our COVID update a little while ago, I had asked about the pediatric emergency department cases for COVID. And I had staff from St. Charles Hospital, Megan Hossi from Mosaic Medical, Dr. David Cooten, a bunch of people weighed in and shared information with me. And kind of the net, the net results, I, I think, of what I heard from people was the families who are bringing their kids into the emergency department for, for COVID concerns, it, it wasn't, it wasn't people who didn't have adequate healthcare coverage, so they were just using the emergency department as a last resort. It was people who were genuinely very concerned about the, the symptoms their, their kids were exhibiting. Or in, in some cases, it was people who, you know, had, maybe it wasn't the worstest symptoms, but they knew they had been exposed, and it was a time of day when an urgent care clinic wasn't open or, you know, primary, they didn't have access to primary care. And so for peace of mind, they were, you know, coming in there with, with maybe not the most severe symptoms, but with symptoms and, you know, just a fear that their, their kid had, had COVID, and, and they wanted to get it checked out right away. So there was not a, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a situation of excessive use of the emergency department, which was, it was, yeah, helpful to understand that. I mean, it's troubling from the perspective that there are so many kids that are getting COVID. And, but it's, it would, made me feel better that at least, at least, you know, it wasn't because people didn't have adequate healthcare coverage.
Well, it's good to learn about the facts on something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other items? Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. We'll go to, you can, yeah, move down a little if you need to.
I know.
The sun's right in your eyes now.
I know, it's like, all of a sudden-
So at this time-
-new bonds are not working, we need to, I'm sure they're under warranty. If they aren't, they should be.
This thing on the wall over here, does that, there's a number of little controls over here, did these, will, would any of these make it work? No, okay.
At this time, we'll go to-